Call a meeting to order.
Okay.
Bank?
Oh, yeah, I want to bang the gavel. Calls meeting to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by David Keane of the Orange County Fire Authority.
Before we start with the invocation, I was going to ask Tim Brown to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but I see we have three Boy Scouts in the audience. Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening? Okay, and there'll be following the invocation, boys. So, thank you. Hold on, right after this, guys. And then we're going to bring you up to the microphone to talk to.
All right, let's pray. Almighty God, we come before you on this beautiful day, a day that we gladly receive from you, a day that we entrust these leaders to have your wisdom to guide the plans for this city. We thank you for your blessings, for your provision, and we thank you for how you will continue that provision for this city. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Boys? Let's hear your names in the microphone before you guys speak, though.
Ethan.
Blake.
Blake.
Carson.
And what troop are you guys with?
737.
Okay, yeah.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselmember Brown?
Here.
Counselmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Potem Baker?
Here.
Mayor Hamm?
Here.
And Counselmember Doncheck is absent. There are no special presentations this evening. Members of the audience who wish to address counsel on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. I do have some cards.
Oh, we got a big stack this evening. First up's going to be Brad, and followed by Brad is going to be Mr. Chang. Yep, okay, okay. And then the third one will be Pete Curran. And just a reminder for everybody, we have a three-minute timer, and if you look down at all the three lights, it'll remind you. Okay, Brad?
Glad we're on a first-name basis. San Clemente does not tolerate opposing points of view and has closed its doors to discussion and dissent. The city manager, Assistant City Manager, and all council members refuse to meet with me. Ten years of documents were removed from the city website, and the city is not a sunshine city. The city avoids transparency and restricts access and discussion. In common sense, Thomas Paine stated, "Government, even at its best, is but a necessary evil; in its worst state of intolerable one." The city does not listen and uses our money to fight opposition. The city has transformed itself into King George. Like England and the Revolution, the city has lost battle after battle. It has been forced to pay legal fees to the fishermen, Avenue de San Juan partners, and the outlet malls signed litigants. Instead of resolution, the city fights. One judge found the city had acted in, quote, "bad faith," unquote, and that the city, quote, "Officials have ignored the city's own ordinances, which seek to promote cooperation with local landowners," unquote. Good legal advice demands that, in this context, the city should eliminate the new city attorney when they elect one, also representing the city in litigation. At the last council session, the city attorney told council that BPI funds could be used for parking structures, yet his trial brief states just the opposite, he didn't address that issue. Council refused to question his failure to explain this anomaly. How is that possible? The city's closed-door and closed-minded policies must end. While staff and council have recently changed, nothing else has. Another Englishman, Peter Townsend of The Who, wrote in, "Won't get fooled again. Meet the new boss, same as the old boss." We deserve better from our city staff, its elected officials, and their stewardship of our city. And lastly, last time I spoke, I raised the issue of $32,000 of overhead expenditures on $6,000 expenditure of mitigation fund. The city said they would look into it. I was just curious if anybody had looked into this. Thank you so much.
Hey, Brad, can you contact Veronica so we can set up a meeting between you and I?
I will.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Chang. Following Mr. Chang will be Pete Curran.
Hello, council and the mayor. I'm Dr. Lawrence Chang. I've been in practice here for about 17 years in the community. I serve a population of mainly seniors and disabled patients, probably over 1,000 patients in the local community. And why I came here tonight is because my patients, every day, they come to me and say, "What are we going to do when the hospital closes? What are we going to do?" And it really struck a chord with me, and I'm here to really represent my patients on their behalf and explain what I think is going on. I just have three quick points. The first point is, access to care, healthcare, has always been a little bit difficult in San Clemente because where we're geographically located, all the central medical centers are up north. So even with the hospital here, it's been difficult to access care, whether it's specialists like cardiologists or brain surgeons or special tasks. It's already hard to access for my patients, the seniors and disabled. And now with the hospital closing, it's going to be even more difficult. I find it a very serious problem. And I also have a business background, just got my MBA from UC Irvine a couple of years ago. So I understand why Memorial's doing this. It's mainly the change, the shift in healthcare that they're switching from inpatient to outpatient. It's a good business idea, but the problem is we're really neglecting the community. And I believe San Clemente is a world-class community, and we need to have world-class healthcare. And it can be done, I think, in the pure demographics of this community, just since I've been here, the rise in population, the neighboring communities growing. We can support a hospital here, it's just that we have to find an entity that's willing to do that. And I think that's the key, is, you know, healthcare in the past has always been about serving the community and serving the people who most need it. Looks like I have a minute left, but I think it's doable. I think just having an outpatient center and a state-of-the-art outpatient center, I don't think it's really enough because the people who really need to access emergency care, and they can't get it through urgent care because urgent care usually requires good insurance and cash upfront. And we're not here just to make, in the community, just to make a profit, but to serve the community. I hope the city council and the mayor could figure out a solution to have a solution to this. But I think with the demographics, I'm sure that the hospital will be here, but I'm not sure which operator it's going to be. Just the pure demographics of this, if you really look at the demographics of the city, it's going to support a hospital. But it's a matter of having the courage and doing the right thing for the future and for our kids and for the elderly. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Pete Curran?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Since the very first public disclosure that Memorial Care was considering a closure of San Clemente Hospital and the emergency room came the assertion that 65% of 911 ambulance patients from San Clemente and surrounding communities bypassed San Clemente Hospital due to specialty care receiving centers and designations. Indeed, this information was put forth in print, online, and has been presented by Memorial Care as an unsubstantiated undocumented claim at every public meeting on the subject in order to cast the hospital and the emergency room as unnecessary. Today, as a result of a Freedom of Information request to the Orange County Fire Authority, we have the truth. Since hard data has been missing from these meetings, I will offer the following. In 2013, there was 1,780 transports by the Orange County Fire Authority ambulances in San Clemente. Of that, 1,675 went to San Clemente Hospital. That is 94% of patients for the year 2013. In 2014, there were 1,760 Orange County Fire Authority transports in the City of San Clemente, 1,217 to San Clemente Hospital. That is a 69% transport rate to the closest receiving. So the two-year average of San Clemente ambulance patients being transported to the closest hospital is 82%. That is an 18% bypass, not 65%. Furthermore, Memorial Care has stated, "The majority of ambulance patients bypass San Clemente due to specialty care center designations." This is also contrary to the facts. While some patients, such as traumas, cardiac, or stroke patients, are sent to special receiving centers, the majority are sent to the closest paramedic-receiving hospital. And according to the current Orange County Emergency Medical Services treatment protocols, those patients who are sent to the closest receiving include adult cardiopulmonary cardiac arrest with CPR in progress, adult and pediatric near drownings, respiratory distress including asthma, bronchitis, and emphysema, adult cardiac arrhythmias including bodecardia and tachycardia, non-traumatic altered level of consciousness including diabetics, non-traumatic abdominal pain, non-traumatic shock including hypertension, allergic reactions, anaphylaxis, substance overdose, poisonings, seizures, convulsions, islet extremity fractures, minor burns, lacerations, snake and venomations, thermal emergencies, and behavioral emergencies are all currently triaged to the closest emergency room. In closing, Memorial Care has been waging a disinformation campaign since the beginning. We now have the data that supports this and to prove it. It was disingenuous for them not to offer the factual data from the beginning. It should be publicly noted, and they should be admonished for it. Thank you for your listening.
Thanks, Pete, for presenting the information. Okay, Mr. Nickel, you're up, and then following Mr. Nickel will be Vani Barnes, and then Tom Barnes.
Good evening, members of the council. Happy New Year. Congratulations to the new council people. You're familiar with all of this. This is the proposed parking lot on El Camino Real between Ichiviri and Cayallani. And this, the access to this lot, to this parking lot is going to be through Caídas Echa. All the pedestrian, all the pedestrian, all the traffic to this, to the beach, to the beach area come through Pico or through Estación. Vehicular and pedestrian parking, they park down here. And so additionally, there is no stopping, there is no stopping or parking along this entire block. So all the access to the beach, used to the beach trail and the beach is from these two streets. Then, let me see, next slide would be... Now, this is what could happen here, a parking lot where only the necessary amount of blacktop is used for parking, and which leaves a really wide area for landscaping along El Camino Real, where we have talked about, everybody's talked about being a gateway to the city and being able to do a really good job of landscaping. So this scheme has in and out, separate entrances and one-way traffic, which is safer. Let's see, the next slide. Now, this is the proposed plan. The proposed plan has 88 of the 100-foot depth of the lot is used for blacktop, for parking, unnecessary. You only need one aisle. This is in and out, unsafe access because it's all right there, there is no way for people to walk out of there without going through this driveway. They have to come over here if they want to do that. But one of these aisles is totally unnecessary. These cars are going to back into these trees that are proposed over here. But mainly, what it does, it doesn't leave anything to beautify the entrance to the city, and it leaves, and it uses a tremendous amount of blacktop when only 60 feet are Then the last slide here. Oh, I guess I'm done.
Can you wrap it up in one more sentence, Mr. Nickel?
Yes. Well, here is a comparison. You see the amount of blacktop, you see the amount of green area, and also, this is because of what I said before about the access to the beach being from Estación and Pico, all this is unnecessary. This is an elaborate gateway over here, an arch, a masonry archway. This is an unnecessary walkway, nobody's going to use it. The access being elsewhere, and this being all red, no drop-offs, no stopping, and there's a wall there that is also unnecessary.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vani, then Tom, and then Dr. Colon.
Let me go one more. What happened?
Just one second, sorry.
Take us off? Okay, there we go. All right, this is the view cone. The parking lot is right in the center of the view cone, which includes street views for Pico and El Camino Real. This is the street view from El Camino Real, where everyone can enjoy seeing the ocean view horizon over parked cars and through the MetroLink corridor. Pedestrians, motorists, and bike riders enjoy this view every day. Sign number one is where some rows of cars, 19 cars, will be in the proposed plan, set back five feet from the sidewalk. Sign number two is where the same row of cars will be in the alternate plan, set back 35 feet from the sidewalk, where the ground level is 1 and 1/2 feet lower. This is what the proposed plan will look like with the cars that are five feet in height. They will block the ocean view horizon and the ocean view through the MetroLink corridor. This is the proposed plan with a three-foot-high concrete wall, five feet of green area, and only five of the 16 trees. Four melaleuca trees in the middle of the lot and one New Zealand Christmas tree on the left further block ocean views. The alternate plan, however, will look like this. The ocean view horizon over the cars and through the MetroLink corridor will be preserved. The alternate plan also has 35 feet of landscaping from the sidewalk to the cars. The ocean view will be enhanced with about 6,300 square foot of green area along the roadway. And the trees in the back are above the horizon, and they frame the view and do not block it. Now let's compare the two plants, one on top of the other. The proposed plan hides the ocean views, while the alternate plan preserves them. This is the consultant's idea of the visual impact of the proposed plan. It does not appear to show the visual impact of front-row parked cars. It does not include the green area. The height of the MetroLink pillars and roof appear to be exaggerated with an unrealistic ocean view through the MetroLink corridor. And the visual impact of 16 proposed trees is also unrealistic, and only three of them appear to be identified. Please rescind approval of the proposed plan and preserve the ocean view. Thank you.
Thanks, Vani. Tom Barnes, and Steve Colon, and then Warren Ruderin.
Mayor Hamm, member of City Council. Slide one, please. This is a visual diagram comparison of the plans. Excuse me, the chart is up. Well, we'll talk about that then. This chart gives you a comparison of the two plans. If you look at the right in the proposed percentages, the proposed plan is basically going to be concrete and asphalt and a lot of it. The alternate plan has more green space. If you see, the blacktop area for the proposed plan is 62% of the lot. The blacktop area for the alternate plan is only 53%. The total amount of non-permeable is 73% for the proposed plan and only 55% for the alternate plan. And the amount of green area, green space, will be 27% for the proposed plan and 45% for the alternate plan. It's clearly that the alternate plan does what it's supposed to do, which is provide parking and green area. The proposed plan does a lot of things, but it doesn't do what it's supposed to do. It does a lot of things that it should not be doing. Next slide. Okay, this is an example of something that I feel is important, is that the resolution that established this area, and when it was taken by eminent domain, Resolution 9455, basically said that this area will be taken by eminent domain for two purposes: storm drain improvement and parking. It didn't say anything about an event center, it didn't say anything about 2,000 square feet of concrete that you can't park cars on, you can't plant greenery on, didn't say anything like that. I think what's happened in this city is we confused these two resolutions, and we've done this over the years. The Resolution 6970, which preceded Resolution 9455, that pertains to the triangle, and it also establishes the triangle as an area where you can have public space, you can have parks, and you can have parking. That's totally different than Resolution 9455. So if you want to put the masonry wall, you want to put the archway thing, you want to put all this 2,000 square feet of, what is it, paving or whatever they call it, concrete paving, you can put that on the triangle, you just can't put it on the ECR lots. Now, the city has submitted this plan, and the city has submitted this plan to the Coastal Commission, and it's going to go before them. I believe this plan that's going before them is in violation of the Coastal Act, at least in terms of, as Vani showed, in terms of taking away the ocean view that pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists enjoy today on El Camino Real. And so we will be appearing before the Coastal Commission to let them know what we feel about this plan. The city can, I think, you know, make this right. We're not opposed to the parking. We believe in the parking, and we think the parking should be there, but we're opposed to what this plan entails, which is much beyond just parking.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Dr. Colon, and following Dr. Colon will be Warren.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Happy New Year. You hear a lot of noises in the emergency room, and you kind of get used to them, and they're second nature, and you know based on how loud they are and how fast they are, whether it's a heart rate monitor or an oxygen monitor. And there's one that I started hearing yesterday that I wasn't familiar with, and I didn't realize that there's a computer screen in the emergency room which keeps tracks of all the hospitals that are open and closed. Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you're very familiar with this screen. It was beeping so frequently and so loudly and caught my attention because yesterday, 19 hospitals were on diversion in Orange County. 19. All four in our area, and 19 of all 26 Orange County hospitals were closed to paramedic traffic because they were full. Either they were full in their emergency rooms or their ICUs were full. Dr. Chang is here, which I certainly appreciate. Dr. Chang is unbiased, if you will. I'd like to think that we're unbiased, but some people think that we're not, and there are a lot of physicians who are employed by Memorial Care, so obviously, a lot of those physicians are not here because either they feel differently than we do, or they feel, a number of them feel like if they come and speak here, even if they speak their mind, that there'll be some retribution. Dr. Chang shows up today without any bias. He shows up today on behalf of his patients who keep asking him what's going on, and he wants for his patients the same thing that we all do. I always want to point out that our hospital is still open. It's still functioning, ER is still very busy. Yesterday, we had all the rooms full, and then we had three cuts in the hallway and more people arriving. Our ICU is being restricted. This was just done by Memorial Care a few weeks ago. They limit our ICU to having only three patients, and if a critical care patient shows up, that patient needs to be moved to Laguna Hills or kept in the emergency room. Even if we have enough nurses in the hospital to take care of those patients, they're not allowed to put more than three patients in the ICU. The nursing supervisors at the hospital are not allowed to call in nurses that might be available, our own nurses who might be available to take care of those patients, nor are they allowed to call registry personnel in to help take care of those patients. They simply have to transfer the patients. And I think this is an effort by Memorial Care to further put a stranglehold on the hospital. I'd love it if we had the luxury of sitting down with them at the table, but we've made that request and are yet to hear back from them. I'd love it if we even had the luxury of the board members sitting down at a table and weighing the pros and cons of keeping the hospital open or closing it, and then making a fair decision, but we don't have that luxury either. What Memorial Care is going to do, and what I propose that they've always meant to do, is put the hospital in such a shape that they're going to come back to the city and say, "You know what? It really doesn't matter what's good or bad for the hospital. We really have no choice because we really can't function because we have no employees." And this, of course, is their doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Colon. Will you and Gus be here after the meeting this evening?
Yes.
Okay, great. Should be a quick one. Mr. Vidri? And that's our last card, so if anybody else would like to speak, please submit a card right now.
I'm back from, I'm back from the Christmas holidays, and just parenthetically, I'd like to report that my brother has turned the water off in his house because, so his pipes don't freeze. And he lives in southern Louisiana, so San Clemente does not have perfect weather. It does have good weather. I came back from Christmas holidays. Something I've been asking for quite a while is a plot map of the hospital with parking in the buildings to explore whether, in fact, the limited space on the piece of property precludes any kind of building part of it while tearing down another part, and thereby addressing one of the things that Memorial Care says absolutely requires shutting down the hospital, and that is, they can't rebuild the hospital without interrupting service. So I'm checking on that. At long last, I got a plot map. Maybe it looks like a blank sheet of paper, but I got out my magnifying glass. This really is a plot map, so I'm going to go to Staples and get it blown up. I may also, after really trying to engage in something constructive, I think I'll probably have to go to the city and get one of their plot maps because I hope spring's eternal, and I'm really hoping that they will engage constructively. It's been difficult. So hope springs eternal.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that was our last speaker.
All right.
Can we get a motion?
Yes, can we have a motion wave reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
Second.
Motion by Baker, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's four zero.
Close session report, City Attorney.
The City Council took no reportable actions during the 5:00 PM close session.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal.
Tim? I don't have anything. Okay, I got a request for item F. So if Pam is here, she come out. Item F is the printing of the Quarterly City Magazine.
Could we have a motion that'll approve?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approve the others.
Skip ahead. Motion to approve the rest of the items?
Second.
Motion by Baker, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
That's four zero. Okay. Thanks for keeping on me, John. Hey, Pam, how are you? So the concern that I had was not over the magazine itself, but the actual printing of the magazine, in that where is the printing going to be taking place? Who are we contracting with?
We are contracting with Advanced Web Offset.
Okay, and where are they located?
They are located south of here, in San Diego County.
Okay. And it was, were any printing companies looked at in the city of San Clemente?
Correct.
And why did we go with?
We actually sent it out to quite a few different printing organizations, and the ones that are in here are the ones that actually applied, and none of them are in the city of San Clemente, except I think there's, I think one of them might have been, but they were not as qualified as others, let's say.
Okay. So we did reach out to the local?
We did. We really did. We actually, I mean, we prefer it actually if we have all San Clemente companies that are doing everything for us.
Okay.
So we did try. I think with something as unique as printing a brochure like this, it is very difficult for the smaller printing companies, which tend to be in our city, to be able to do this. And so it's usually contracted out to another city anyway.
Great. Well, there's no other discussion. I'll move item.
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Happy New Year.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is to consider fee adjustments for the Vista Hermosa Sports Park and San Clemente Aquatic Center. However, staff is recommending that this item be tabled.
Okay. With that, I move that we table this item. Motion by Hamm, second by Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
Oral Communications, Part Two. I don't have any cards. City Manager?
No report.
City Attorney?
I have no report.
Councilmembers?
Yeah. I'm going to read the Great Gatsby aloud, just so this meeting will go another hour. Because this is, it's not, I could even do Moby Dick.
While you're doing that, Tim, you mind if I look sideways at the city manager?
Yeah.
Not a smile, no. A frowny face. Really? This could have been there two months ago.
Hmm, I'm curious. So, it's terrible. Actually, I am tempted to read the Great Gatsby aloud to everyone. I will just give a preliminary notice. I know it's not funny. On January 27th, there is a joint meeting with a community engagement panel for San Ono for Nuclear Generating Station. And what this is, is, let me pull this up. I did not anticipate we'd get here so quickly, so let me do this real quick here. What this is, is a joint event, and it's designed to address nuclear waste. And it's a, it's going to be with the Washington DC-based Bipartisan Policy Center, and it's going to be a joint meeting as part of an 18-month effort to generate action on the movement of used nuclear fuel in the United States. And what they're looking to do is to reinvigorate and expand the discussion on waste, barriers, if any progress on waste, and explore options to break through these barriers. The effort's being run by Tim Frazier, who previously ran the President's Blue Ribbon Commission on America's Nuclear Future. And this is an exciting development because it really shows that there's a movement afoot by interested parties to address what has been a very long neglected and element of waste disposal. And so it's keenly aware of this, how important this is for San Clemente. And so I just want to invite everyone to attend that. It will be on the 27th. It will be from 6:00 to 9:30 PM at San Juan Capistrano Community Center, and there will be more information available at songscommunity.com. So I hope you can join us.
This Saturday, if everyone saw it, there is a meeting to showcase the Beach Club and the changes that are going to happen to it. Staff will be there. I believe it's at, is it at 8:00 in the morning or 9:00?
It's 10:00.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 10:00 o'clock. Okay. 10:00 in the morning on Saturday at the Beach Club. If you are all interested in what it will look like and the changes to the floor plan, please show up at the Beach Club on Saturday.
Just a reminder that the city is accepting applications for the Planning Commission, Coastal Advisory Committee, and the Investment Advisory Committee through this Thursday. So if you're interested in any of those, please, please, please submit your application. Joanne warns me that we're a little lower than normal, so if you're interested, please put in. Look forward to seeing you.
Okay. Next item is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1591 relating to the replacement of residential mobile homes when their use is legally non-conforming.
I'll do it. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1591 entitled, "Ornance of the City Council, City San Clemente, California," amending Section 17.72.060 regarding the placement of mobile homes when their residential use is legally non-conforming.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Bob, would you like to do the adjournment?
I move that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting this evening in honor of a good friend of San Clemente, longtime resident, Roy Hurlbuck, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. Roy was a former city council member in San Clemente, longtime Exchange Club member, 40 years. And Roy was responsible and a big part of revitalizing the San Clemente Inn here in town, making it a nice place that it is today. Roy's a terrific guy, and he's going to be missed. So I'd like to move that we adjourn to a regular, adjourn regular meeting to be held in January 13th, 2015, at 6:00 PM in council chambers located at 100 Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California, for the purpose of interviewing candidates and making appointments to the City Planning Commission, Investment Advisory Committee, and Coastal Advisory Committee. A subsequent adjourned regular council meeting will be held on January 20th, 2015, in the council chambers located at 100 Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California. Closed session items will be considered at 2:30 PM. The regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 PM.
Motion by Baker, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. See you next week.
A new record.